Would that be a call to the votes, please?
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Hood?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Present.
Councilman Affai?
Present.
The mayor is here. Councilman Musa and Councilman Alsmir are not here at the moment, but we do have four, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Start for me. Do we have any community announcements?
Nothing listed on here. I came in.
Mr. Mayor, I have one. It's just the new supermarket grocery store.
Great openings.
It's grand opening this Friday. Everyone is invited. It's on Joseph Pampel. Yeah, I can provide you the... I know you emailed. So that's called Eat Hug, Halal Food Market, Riven Hug, November 17th at 2:00 p.m. It's Friday at 11916 Joseph Pampel. And as you know, it's between Homur and Kashmir. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And the same day, there's a grand opening at 12:00 noon. I don't remember the name of the market.
Derry. Derry.
Derry is there, please, yeah. Good store.
I don't, you know, the address off in Carolina.
I don't, um, yeah. Bill got sent out by email as well.
Yes. It'll be on social media too.
Okay. All right, thank you. No more announcements?
Can I say congratulations to all the winners of the election on November 7th for the general election? Councilman Hassan, Councilman Alsmir, and upcoming Councilman Sedman for winning the general primary for the city council position. Unfortunately, none of our proposals nor the school board proposal passed. Those all came in as no's. Well, no. But yes, that was it. That's my announcement.
Thank you. All right. So we move to proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. We'll start with Family Court Awareness Month. Would that be a call? Wait that, please.
Sure.
The mission of the Family Court Awareness... Oh, just one moment. Proclamation recognizing Family Court Awareness Month, whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission at the FCAMC is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents, while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to decrease awareness on the importance of empirically based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as child trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court systems. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. The research includes the adverse childhood experience, studies, child custody evaluators, belief about domestic abuse allegations, and child custody outcomes in cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Ahmed Galab, mayor of Hamtramck hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month. I encourage all residents to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor and value the lives of children. Signed, Ahmed Galab.
Thank you. Next one is honoring the life of Richard Rocky.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll take this one because I also have some announcements with it as well. So as everybody's aware, we lost Rocky, who was our co-supervisor and longtime friend to pretty much the whole city. He is greatly missed here at City Hall. This Friday is going to be his visitation. It's going to be at Wilkes Funeral Home from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then followed on Saturday, the funeral service, starting laying in state at 9:30 a.m. until the funeral mass, which starts at 10 a.m. That'll be at St. Florian, and the procession looks like it'll be on to Mount Olivet Cemetery after that. I don't have the wake details, but I'm sure anyone attending will be easily attainable for that. And as far as the proclamation goes. Proclamation honoring the life of Richard Rocky Radke, whereas it is with heavy hearts and profound sorrow that we come together to pay tribute to a beloved member of our community, Mr. Richard Rocky Radke, who departed this world on November 7th, 2023. And whereas Rocky, age 62, was the son of late Maria and Beau, the brother and best friend of Mark Jean and the cherished uncle of Joshua. And whereas Rocky was a dear friend to many and left an indomitable mark on the hearts of those who had the privilege of knowing him. And whereas Rocky's professional journey was marked by his tenure as department head of code enforcement in the city of Hamtramck, where he dedicated himself to ensuring the well-being and safety of our community. And whereas prior to his dedicated service to the city, Rocky was a former owner of the renowned Baker Street Cart Bar, where his alley cow grill became a culinary delight for all who visited. And whereas Rocky's passion for entertaining and cooking was evident in his love for watching cooking shows, always seeking inspiration for new culinary adventures. And whereas his joyful spirit extended to the bar, where his hearty laugh could be heard from a mile away, filling the establishment with warm and camaraderie. And whereas Rocky, in addition to his contributions to the community, served as a paramedic, demonstrating his commitment to the health and well-being of his fellow residents. And whereas Rocky's legacy is not only defined by his professional achievements, but also by the immense love and compassion he shared with everyone he encountered. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of City of Hamtramck express their deepest consolences to the family and friends of Richard Rocky Radke and honor his memory as a man of integrity, compassion, and boundless generosity. Be it further proclaimed that the city of Hamtramck acknowledges the significant impact Rocky had on our community and commits to preserving his legacy as a testament to the strength of our shared bonds. Signed, Ahmed Galab, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? No, sir. Okay, we'll move to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Mr. Bill Meyer. You don't want to talk? You're the only person.
Oh.
You're first and last and middle.
A lot of pressure they go through. Actually, that's one of the points I want to make.
Can you please just push the button on the mic? Thank you. Mic check. Is it green?
No. It's dead.
Oh, here you go. You can pick this one.
Oh, good.
You break them mics?
Yeah. Just a bad. All right, well, I'm here to... Hi, council, mayor, and what else? I'm here to discuss, talk about four unrecognized broken records that took place recently. One of them is that, I think, the last meeting, there was no public comments. And no email comments. After all this talk for months about you can only talk for 10, 20 minutes, you can only have 20 minutes of the email comment. No one sent an email, no one sent a comment in. And as far as I know, that's the first time ever that that has happened. And it looks like it almost happened tonight too, but I showed up, so sorry to ruin the record. That's one of them. Second is, I don't think anybody's talking about the fact that we have, for the first time in my life here at Hamtramck, the budget, we have a balanced budget and surplus money. That's never been like that in the whole history since I've lived here, probably way before that too. Of course, no one's talking about it. This is a major accomplishment. I think you'd all deserve credit for that. So I'll put it here in the minutes. Thirdly, I think no one realizes that the rally that took place last Saturday in Hamtramck was probably the largest rally in my lifetime here in Hamtramck. And certainly, maybe even in the history of Hamtramck, although there were big ones in the '30s. In a long time, it was the largest. There were easily over 1,000 people there. Many of them were from Hamtramck, but it brought, drew in a lot of people who supported the cause. And the cause was the demand to ceasefire in Gaza. People that are getting slaughtered. There's now over 10,000 people being killed in the shooting gallery where they're just tied in, they're locked in there, and the guns are killing them. Over 5,000 children, infants are being killed and murdered. Whatever the reason, there's no excuse for that. And at the rally, I was very proud of the two speakers. Khalid Turani spoke at the beginning, and our mayor spoke at the end, saying very important things, which of course the media didn't report on accurately. And I do want to mention, and so the fourth thing is, I think this is the first rally in Hamtramck where Muslims finally protested on the streets against U.S. government policies. Of course, this wasn't the first war in Gaza. There was one in '21, there was one in '19, there was one in '16, and you know, many of them. We were there for all of those. But Muslims didn't come out for those. This was a record breaker. This was, people were fearless about coming out and speaking against U.S. policy, which is to essentially support the Zionist Israeli government and its genocidal project in Gaza. This is genocide. And our government is supporting genocide, whether you want to talk about it. This is a classical terminology for genocide. But I want to ask for another minute. Thank you. But I think you should also note that our newspaper, our Record of Not, or whatever it's called, our Islamophobic newspaper supposedly, but it's really an opinion piece. These are all opinions that are written in the paper. It's one person mostly writing, it's name, same name on every article in the whole newspaper. It's like almost comical. This guy had the audacity to report that there were 200 people at this rally. I mean, there were 200 people in front of one store. I mean, there was easily 1,000 people there. Why would you want to misrepresent that? This newspaper is considered the voice of Hamtramck, and people around the world use this paper to get facts about Hamtramck. It was, it was full of lies, distortions, misinformation, a lack of any representation from both sides. And I have more to say about that later, but we cannot afford to have a newspaper in the city that tells lies like this, that distorts what's happening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
The top of public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And talking about the newspaper, I... They reported wrong information about me that I said in the council last time. I mentioned that to the guy. He said that I said because the Jewish people lived there for the past 3,000 years. When I said here, I said because they claim that their great-grandfather lived there 3,000 years ago. That's a big difference between the two meanings. Because when you say they lived there for the past 3,000, that means they have the right to stay there. But when you say 3,000 years ago, that's different. The indigenous people changed their religion over and over, to Christianity, then to Muslims. So there's a big difference in the meetings. And although I mentioned that to him, he still did apologize about misreporting the information. And it sounds like it's the voice of the opposition to the government. So that's obvious. Thank you. And we move now to the consent agenda. And this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from the October 24th, 2023 regular city council meeting, approval of invoice register date ending November 14th, 2023, and approval of pre-approval expenditure date ending November 14th, 2023. Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. We move now to the public hearing. And we have Resolution 2023-158B approving the second reading and public hearing of the amendment and proposed ordinance to Chapter 96 for closed vacant or abandoned property. Motion?
Second.
All right, so this is to open the hearing?
7:15.
There's no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to close?
Also.
Any discussion for...
Mr. Mayor, would, like, Oday, just give a quick rundown on it?
I mentioned it last time. We'll talk about it a little bit right now. Basically, this is just a way to get vacant property owners to develop their property. And there's a number of exceptions for a number of, you know... If it's a vacant property that's connected to a residential... If it's a residential lot connected to a residential house, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about undeveloped property that's not being used, not being touched for over a period of time. And it increases over a period of time what the fee is. It's a redevelopment-ready fee is what we're calling it. And basically, either you redevelop your property or you pay extra fee, or you sell it to someone who's ready to do that. And that's what this is here to do.
It does not target parks, obviously, or pocket parks. And then, as Oday stated, if you have a spare lot next to your house, you're done. It doesn't count for that.
Who? Councilman Affai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmir?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-158B approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So now we move to the new business. And we start with Resolution 2023-165A, approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of Hamtramck zoning ordinance text amendment to Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 15. Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Mrs. Faulkner here to discuss it.
Hi, I'm presenting six amendments that the planning commission has discussed. The planning commission had a public hearing already on these amendments, and this is the final proposed version after several discussions with the planning commission. I'm not going to go into all of them in depth because that document is very long. But the document does have all of the proposed text. Both, all of the amendments relate to either streamlining the process for development or changing some of the residential ordinances. So I'll give a couple examples. Right now, we have an ordinance that says if you're modifying your building footprint by 10% or less, staff and our consultants can administratively approve that. So if you're putting on, you know, a little tiny addition to your building, you don't need to come, you know, for a public approval process for those small additions to a commercial building. So it would change that from 10% to 20%. So it just makes it quicker and simpler for small changes to buildings and small expansions. Another one in here is moving the site plan approval process back to the planning commission. It used to be, site plans used to be approved by the planning commission a couple years ago. Actually, I believe at the time it was a two-step process. It was planning and then city council. RRC, which is the Redevelopment Ready Communities, they require that the planning commission be the final step. So it still would be a one-step process, but it wouldn't go to city council anymore. And it wouldn't do two meetings either. It would just be one meeting. Before, I know there were not a lot of members on the planning commission, but it has been, you know, we've had great attendance lately. And other cities use the planning commission for this purpose. And as well, we have planners and architects on the planning commission who are specialized in those types of reviews. Another amendment I want to highlight is currently in the residential zone, if you're building multifamily, each unit has to be at least 700 square feet. The issue we've had with that is that sometimes people want to build small multifamily structures, maybe a fourplex, and have like 500 square foot studios. So think about studio apartments, you know, no bedroom, you just like a little studio. So currently, we've denied those types of applications because we require that all of the units in residential be at least 700 square feet. But a lot of people, especially people who live alone, want, you know, lower rent. It's more affordable for the builder as well. So it would just allow that to now be possible. So those are a couple of the amendments. If you, if you have any other questions on any of them, I could answer them at this meeting or the next meeting.
And this is just the first?
Chair, frustrating. I still want to... Anything goes to the planning commission? I want to still come to the council meeting to approve. That is my comment.
Mr. Chair.
May I ask you why you guys decided to remove council and just use just the planning?
So was it, it's not...
What's approved?
It's not us. So originally, because I've looked into like what's happened over the past five years, even before I got here. Originally, it was a two-step process. So any site plan, which could even be just someone buys a building and is redeveloping it and adding some structural changes to it, they have to go through planning, they gotta go through castle, they gotta go through fire, they gotta go to, you know, engineering. And it's just a lot of steps. And so to make the process more development-friendly, redevelopment-ready, and just in general in the state of Michigan, they're encouraging it to be like a one-meeting process. So we still have to do all the technical reviews, but you don't want to have two meetings because it just delays the process. You know, time is money is what they say.
We're trying to make it easier for people to develop, basically.
It's always been in the system why we're changing it now.
We cannot get redevelopment-ready certified if we keep it as council.
It's a certification that the city's also striving for.
It's one of the last steps actually to getting the certification. So we've done almost everything else that's needed, but they won't release that certification if council keeps control. Again, the planning commission has architects and planners on the planning commission, and they have said that it can be seen to be... That development can be tied to politics, where it should really just be like a non-biased review of zoning and features and standards. And so they, they said it has to be the planning commission.
So now when the board, when the entire... So now when the entire board are a different color, now it's, oh, well, we don't want it to be political. So previously was fine. Now when we all, I'm a different, a different color skin, now, oh, we've come to a political issue.
Councilman, I assure you that that's not...
Well, I would like to amend this, Mr. Chair.
So just to clarify, I think most of these amendments are suggested by people who are against the delay. It's for the sake of time. That's, that's what it says. I mean, I intended some of the...
And the planning is also appointed by this board.
The planning is also very diverse now, and we have people who spend a lot of time reading this. We don't spend much time reading them before and going through the rules and regulations and everything. They do that in the planning. So it's up to you guys, but I don't think it's, it's mostly suggested, I think, by, no sir. Same, Mr.?
It's not...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman. I'm sorry. It was, it was Henderson. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as what I'm getting from you, you're trying to make it easy for the residents to go through this process in this thing. However, if you don't have the council involved, then we would not know if they complained, commented, and then we would not know what's going on. Because usually, they approach us when there is a problem, administrative problems going on. I would ask you these questions, even if we, if we don't get... If we approve it today and it goes to the planning commissioners, and will you have an administrative authority there, like the city administration, to still review their planning? Or will the city manager be knowledgeable to share with the mayor and the council? You know, that sort of thing is going to be established because at the end of the day, you know, that this issue is going to be brought forward to the council once there's anything approved, you know? That's what I'm trying to say, the point. If you don't approve, they will try to make it here or approach one of the colleagues, council member or mayor, that, hey, I asked for this, and they wanted to deny this because, whatever reason. So...
Mr. Mayor? Carolyn, are you prepared to talk about redevelopment-ready as far as what the benefits are and if we do get the certification?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I could talk about that more in a month if we can. Might talk about it a little bit right now. Redevelopment-ready has seven standards for redevelopment. Really, it's showing that you're a business-friendly, development-friendly community. We have been working on it for probably about four years. And we have a lot of, we've made a lot of progress. We've adopted, you know, many things. This has always been one of their standards. It's not a new standard recently. And a lot of it comes with grant opportunities for businesses within our city. For us to be participating in this, MADC is a fantastic partner. In fact, I think they're the best grant partner that we have. They have the easiest-to-access funds out of any funds that I know for redevelopment projects. So without going into too many details, they have... They are the ones that sponsor, like MADC sponsors the Build My Community Fund, which is the one that's $250,000 towards building redevelopment. So potentially, 20, 30 buildings in our city could have $250,000 in grant money, not alone, to repurpose vacant buildings. But all of this is, you know, it's a cooperative thing. So they want us to, you know, meet these high standards in terms of, you know, some of the things we had to do was we had to adopt bylaws at the planning commission. We had to adopt bylaws at the ZBA. We have to have really accurate zoning maps that are easily accessible online for developers so they're not searching around for hours just trying to get the zoning. You know, everything needs to be easy upfront, clear. The fees have to be clear. You know, you want them not to be spending a lot of time trying to navigate through our system.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is just the first reading. May humbly ask that we move it forward and then allow Carolyn and CED to come back at the second reading, which you still absolutely can change it with the more pros and cons of what this will do and won't do. Because this will not allow us to do the redevelopment-ready because of this one detail. So, and that's fine, if that's what council wants. But I would ask that you give Carolyn's team an opportunity to lay that out a little bit more for you.
Council? Mr. Chair? My question, this practice during the last couple decades, and you're just trying to change this one to take this opportunity to see the council overseas this. You're just taking to the planning commission. Only one difference. What is the big difference for this? And council elected by the people. We are very easy to accept the people. If some issue come up, they do not come to the planning commission. They come to the councilmen. They come to the mayor too directly. So we have to get some answer too. So if we do know what's going on before the planning commission, we have a better answer, and we can overlook these things. Mr. Chair, well, the explanation enough. So here is the one. Even though it is come to the council and nothing affecting any grand money, any development, any other thing, is the previous practice is going to stay with the council right? We don't want to give up our council right to somebody else. I still, Mr. Mayor, understand, very educated, very diverse planning commission. I still don't want to give up my right, and I'm not preventing anybody to do the deployment. It is the normal protocol. It's still something we can oversee, and we never deny anything when planning commission approve it. Only the one time when we found some issues between the director, the plumber, and the planning commission has some issue. So you never know what's going to happen. At that time, the residents elect us to look at, oversee all those stops, and we didn't bother nobody. And I want to keep our practice and our right as it is.
Okay, so is there a way we can amend that? Just remove this part and just...
Just the motion to amend it.
I don't...
I believe we have to, if we amend, we could remove it, but if we're changing it, we have to send it back to the planning commission.
I think they just want to remove it.
No, we're going to remove it.
Keep it the way it used to be.
Okay, if I could just speak one thing. This will end our redevelopment-ready process. So I agree with the city manager that we can at least think about it.
They can, they can motion to re-add it when we go back...
Yeah, and you can still come back next week.
Yeah, so that'll, that option will be open. So you still have the exact same things you want until the next meeting to provide them with information regarding redevelopment-ready. So I would say if they want a motion to remove it, that's what they're more comfortable doing now. That's totally cool.
Potentially add a vacant?
We, sure. And you wouldn't need to go back to the planning.
So you'll get a crack at it at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
So what I motion to remove it?
I'll second.
Which letter was that? Carolyn, if you don't mind?
Carolyn, if you don't mind.
Don't come to the council.
B, so just remove B from the amendments.
And I recommend that the couple of members of the Planning Commission attend the next meeting to explain the reasoning.
It, it wouldn't be the Planning Commission. We would want a representative from RRC to come because they're the ones, I'm the one that presented this to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, and no one on the Planning Commission initiated this. I initiated it because I'm trying to receive as a city redevelopment-ready certification. So no one on the Planning Commission initiated this, so I wouldn't want anybody to see it as them having a move to take, take more power. It was something I presented based on the fact that we will no longer be an RRC community, and I'm the main contact with RRC. So I could get an RRC representative to come.
So, I mean, if, if planning is promoting it now too, I mean, they could still.
So it's only amended now?
It's not amended yet. You have to vote on it.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You said it was amended, okay.
It's on the floor.
It's on the floor, it's on the floor, it's not amended. Do you want to vote on it now? You ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Okay, um, we're voting to remove B from Resolution 2023-165A. Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Charbi.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, it is an ordinance, it's up to you.
No, now they have to vote, motion to sec, for the second hearing.
I, yes, I understand.
So they did the motion to modify.
I know, but because it's an ordinance and they're.
He has to vote now.
The mayor votes on ordinances, it's part of the ordinance.
Yeah, he's part of that, you're right.
It's up to you.
I mean, it's, it's added here as a resolution, so.
Yeah, but it's a resolution to amend an ordinance.
He can have a stamp.
I mean, that's fine, I'm, I would say yes, I mean, it's not going to change anything.
Okay, so now we will have to vote on the amended resolution.
Correct.
All right, so.
I'd like to make the motion as amended. Khalil has seconded.
Okay, part of the discussion on that?
No, sir.
All right, so we can vote.
I'm sorry, it was Councilman Hassan who seconded that. Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Charbi.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution, amended resolution 2023-165 approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
All right, thank you. Next one is Resolution 2020, 2020.
Twenty-two.
Whoa, they're all 2020s, let me change the right now.
2023-167, approving the Joseph Campo water main construction.
I'm motion.
Ronan.
167.
Yeah, Ronan, I get it.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Just two, three.
And he's being fixed before you.
Okay, so is any discussion on this one? Or?
Yeah, so during the, last year's Joseph Campo looping project, we found an area between Denton and Alice that, of water, 20-inch water main that is filled with concrete. So that was part of SRF loan. We couldn't fix it because of that loan project. So this is our solution to go in there and put in a new 20-inch water main from Denton to Alice. We know the water main going to Alice is good, so it's just that one section. So we had the contractor that was out there that did the Joseph Campo looping bidding construction, give us a estimate to do that work, and we want to get that design in.
We should top the water situation on that side of town to complete the loop. Right now, we got a couple dead ends.
Do we have any idea why it was filled?
We don't know when it happened, probably happened a few years back, but somebody filled it up with concrete, so.
It could have been that way for 40 years, we just don't know. It's, until unfortunately you open the ground and.
Maybe somebody didn't want to fix the main leak and said, well, just fill it with concrete. We don't know.
Is Joseph Campo concrete or is it pavement?
The road.
Yeah.
It's.
How did it get, how did it get filled if we redid?
It was pumped, somebody had to pump it into it, it's not somebody who just like found its way down.
He just fixed it like eight months ago.
So we did from Denton, down some, from, from west Denton underneath Row Road to east Denton.
Yeah, we didn't do this area.
This area, we found this filled with concrete when we were doing that work. Unfortunately, because it was under an SRF loan, I didn't have the additional funds to do that.
So who was doing those services previously?
This, we don't know when this was filled, this could have been filled 20 years ago for all we know.
We've been the engineer for quite a number of years, is my understanding, and it was, it's not something we, we've known about, otherwise we would have.
It was never brought to us, never, ever.
I'm curious.
And so previous contractor made it there, now we have to do this. So why we have the HENSC?
They did what they did.
What other kinds of supervision we have done?
So when you, when you guys did that, when was it, a couple months ago?
Yeah, that was a different section altogether. That's when we found it.
That's when we found it. So this is our, we're, we had to figure out a solution to get this fixed, so we get that complete loop.
So you guys found it, how long? When was that?
Earlier this year.
This year, I think in March.
And we get notified now?
DPW was notified, we, we had to come up with a solution.
We had to get, we had to get bids on it, how much it's going to cost to fix this. This is, like I said, something that was found during exploratory when they were doing the rest of it. Looking into it, they said, hey, this water main is filled up with concrete. And they weren't contracted to do that section at the time.
No, but, but they, they said they found out when they were doing that repair.
Yeah, this is recent.
And that, recent, so that's been months.
Seven months.
Seven months ago. So we, we just getting notified now about that issue.
Well, I mean, we find all kinds of things in the ground that are, we don't know about.
But this is, this is major, this is something that's going to cost the city money.
Most all it does. I mean, the problem is the city doesn't have, well, it's starting to now, but we have a long history of not having good maps of anything where anything's at in these facilities and stuff, and, and HENSC has taken a lot of steps in cleaning that up, and we're moving towards the future of even bringing you GIS to the city to have it all the way completely mapped out perfectly. But, I mean, we're going to continue to discover things. I mean, you, in any construction, you find weird things that happen which makes, which makes you scratch your head of why did they do this? But, I mean, it's not like, we're wondering why it happened, but we, I mean, who knows? This could have been like that for 40 years. I mean, it's not like, we're like, ah, someone just did this, you know, to, to mess with us. So you, you note it, you figure out how to fix it, you go with, you get all this stuff together and we bring it to council to fix it.
I think, Mr. Chair, so Khalil is trying to explain that this found seven months before. Bring it to our attention, this is what happening, you know, we'll come back to you guys for, you know, how much this costs for repair and everything, but why get to wait all those months and now they get to us? I think that's.
I don't, well, candidly, I mean, there's so much going on at any given time, you know, we, we make note and we prepare a fix for it. It's not like, it's not like something exploded and we just told you about it. I mean, it's, it's just a part of what we do here. We find construction, we find crazy things, we, we know it and we move on. I mean, it's, it's abnormal, but, I mean, if we find, we found a water main, a thing going down Joseph Campo that we didn't know about. I mean, we didn't necessarily know if I'd do that. I mean, I think it told a couple of you in passing, but, you know, I mean, you never, it's not really raising to the.
It's not uncommon, it's, and Eric still has water. So it's not a 911, but it's definitely going to prove what's going on out there. We have another issue, we got a water leak on Kniff right now that there's no shut-offs for. So, I mean, there's, we're finding constant problems, and then we just have to prioritize what, you know, where we're at in our construction season, what's going on, and what contractor either has the capability of doing it, or either wants to bid it. So the one that did Kniff is the one that gave us the bid, right?
The one who did Joseph Campo.
Joseph Campo.
So he'll complete that loop based on what was found here in that.
Mr. Chair, may I? Okay, three years ago, when HENSC was taking over all those plans with the 15 million expense, with the section by section, and I'm here, sitting here, they use the camera, everything was perfectly done, and it was the presented exactly same place, and as is a perfectly done, and there was the money there too, some grand money, some from city money, use the camera, and this is the perfect plan, and, and Mr. Bill Myers also, I believe it was Yaranda, make one good comment, we never know all those kinds of design, HENSC did it, we are thankful for HENSC for doing that. So now, after that, HENSC has to supervise everything that was going on and overseeing that, and we are supporting all the grand money and the merge all the time. Now suddenly come this one, that is unexpected.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, to speak towards that, I, I think I know what your point is, that you're saying that HENSC has all the control, I think is what he meant. But what I was just speaking about was with, we're trying to move towards GIS system in the city, which basically all of the input and all of the maps and everything we have is going to go into our own repository of information within City Hall in GIS, so that we will have, the city will have all that information moving forward. So we're actually taking steps to sort all that out, but, I mean, we're going to continue to find things as we go. I mean, I mean, we got 100 years worth of water and sewer lines in this city that, I mean, the extent of our seniority in here is, I mean, in, in the city is the, as long as person we were talking today is 26 years on the job. So, I mean, a couple decades ago, we wouldn't have any knowledge unless someone came forward and said, hey, we did that.
But we wouldn't have found this without the other, without the other water main being worked out of it.
Right, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you're doing a good job, minus the designer.
Wow, thank you. Well, I appreciate that you guys discovering these things that need to be developed and to be fixed. We're coming along, we're taking the steps to, to fix a city's issue, you know, it's a, it's a city that is left neglected for a while. But we would appreciate it if you would have just told us in advance where we could have adjusted the budget. Now it's, it's, I know the, the fund is coming from the water and source funds, it's almost $100,000, but it's still, that's going to, the, from the, from the water and source. But going forward, it's, it's better to start working on, you know, than get it done. That's what I see, a positive.
Actually, the cost is 800, close to 850,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's.
So B and C, I don't understand what the difference, Water Main Design and Construction Service, that's B, and then the second one said Water Main Construction.
So one's for our services, for the design and construction oversight, and then the second, the one after is for the construction by bidding area contractors.
Which is typically how we do it. We award the design, and then we come back and we award the.
So, so the design costs how much? Because my, my system doesn't work today.
92.
It's the design.
Design and the construction oversight. So when they're out there doing the construction, that we have someone on site making sure. And again, that's where, when we do find things, we have to make a quick decision. We got a contractor, if we stop a contractor in the middle of construction to try and
Mr. Chair.
Make a decision, if it takes a couple days, they can charge us for downtime.
So who decided, I'm sorry, who decided 92, 92,000 design money?
It's for the design and.
Who decided?
This is what, HENSC, this is the bid from HENSC.
So everything HENSC designed before, now we design 92,000, another section going to be redesigned again, another 300,000, another 92,000. The design was one time perfectly done. So now again, again we design, the, who put the 92, why it is not the 10,000? So just a question.
This is a, this is a new section of water main that we, we have not designed.
Guys, you guys was not here, I was here, exactly, when is the big design, HENSC brought it here, perfect design, no more problem. I had a question, don't you think this is the funny one? Or no, no issue? We have all put a camera, everything perfect, and we'll be, going to be okay. Now I think 92,000 design issue, that is my issue.
I'm not sure what.
He was not, he was sitting over there, I was sitting here, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
I'm just trying to get my head around what you're talking about.
And, and one of the, Bill Myers make a nice comment, we everybody, nice design, we never see this kinds of design before, okay? So.
Was, was that water and sewer?
Yes, yes, every, the whole design, whole system. Is the map in the, should be somewhere in the department has, has the big map, the design. Anyway, so my question, 92,000, why is 92?
So we, we have a, a contract with HENSC as our engineers, and these quotes are based upon our contract parameters of what they feel it's going to cost.
Mr. Chair, when I first came here, there was no HENSC. That time city was running without HENSC, okay?
So these big projects that cost millions of dollars here, there's another one coming that costs 11 million or something. I mean, I understand they are important for the city, but there are other projects that we assigned in the beginning of the summertime, and, and they haven't finished them, they just started like eight weeks ago. They wait until the end of the summertime, and then they stop working, and then the snow comes and they stop in the middle. So is there a reason why the delay, for example, filming the street, filming, why, why is it not done yet? You started like.
So, sir, we, we, we struggle to juggle a lot of construction in a small city with limited amount of people. I mean, we've got, I mean, Kniff, multiple things going on with that, we've got alleys being, gone through, we've got lead service lines going, we're at speed humps miscellaneous around the city, we're repaving side streets with, with speed humps and curbs. I mean, we're, we're fixing stuff, we're fixing stuff from years ago. I mean, everywhere we look, we got construction going on, and there just frankly, it's only so many people to go around to get all that going at one, at one time. And, and some of these projects have been in the works for years, frankly. I mean, some of the sewer lines and water line stuff, you know, has been worked on before, long before I've been in this spot, you know, so, I mean, some of these grants, even with.
Most of the grants don't come in until.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is, you know, you got to work on what, what's in front of you at the time and what the grant is requiring. I mean, there's, there's parameters on some of this grant money, there's parameters on some of the loans we got, I mean, everything is different. I mean, it's, it's, it's literally, you need a degree just to sort this stuff out.
I understand, but sometimes, you know, I, I understand those are very important for the health and safety of the people, their infrastructure under the ground, but people care about what they see, and that's very important to us because we promise people things will be done at this, we, we put timeline for them. Then that time passed without getting things done, and you have all the resources available for you to do that, but you prioritize those big projects that are under the ground. We know it's important, but for us also, the, you know, things on the surface are very important, the alleys and the street, and you have all the resources. That's why it's time to, to hire another company now, I think.
Well, we are.
Since we have the resources.
On certain projects, we are. Like for the lead service lines at least, we're trying to get another company in here right now, so we have two companies doing it at the same time.
Mr. Chair.
You know, we, we have said this multiple times, you mentioned hire more companies. We, we have to stick with the same company. It takes them a long time for them to do product. If we lose them, all well, beat it. There are a lot of companies here who are trying to get jobs. You know, and we, we mentioned this, I remember five months ago, and you guys are sticking with the same company.
Councilman, we've been.
Kniff stayed months and almost a year and some, and now we're doing another Kniff, I don't know how long that is going to last. You're not going to get the phone numbers and calls and emails, we are. So why not, we have, like the mayor has said, we have the funds, why not hire more companies?
So we just did a bid, a bid meeting at a site for Prescott Street. One person showed up. It would be the contractor that is already doing work.
That bid opening is Thursday. So we'll see how many, I have about 10 or 12 contractors that have downloaded plans. How many submit a bid, we'll know on Thursday at 10 a.m. on how many bids we receive. Obviously, we go with the lowest bid normally, if they're a qualified bidder, so we have to wait and see who we get. We can't control how many people place a bid for the product.
These properties, they're competitively vetted out, advertised, posted, sent up to the various contractor websites for this. I mean, they're, they're there. I mean, there's only so many people, and you're going to see a couple resolutions from now. We had limited bids on EMS as well.
I got a question. Does, that fund is coming from the water source, correct? Is there any other funds that we use?
For that?
Yes.
I wouldn't say. I mean, I guess you could pay for it out of the general fund, but-
Besides the general fund, is there any?
No.
Let me speak to this, and you're gonna hear it in, I think, our third item that we had. We had, we sat down, we made out the capital improvement plan. On that capital improvement plan, we had a lot of money set aside, because we were expecting 25 to 50% in grant money. You'll hear, we got 100% in grant money. We have the funds in water and sewer fund to do this project. I mean, I'm, you know, Sheriff Mearsen can, Sayed can attest to that.
These are huge, I mean, we just got another 15 million.
15 million in grant money.
We're planning to do all the water lines south of Holbrook, west side of Joseph Campo coming up. I mean-
What's the other budget that we have is 2 million dollars?
For-
No, another one. No, no, we try to, it's the DPS.
So we have road funds. We have major roads, we have local roads, and we have water.
ARPA is what, we have-
ARPA was just a grant.
Okay.
Basically, the federal government gave us money.
Who said we're gonna use the ARPA to build the building for the DPS?
I'm gonna say, why not you do it from water? Why would you choose?
That can be used for something else. Can use it as matching for another grant or something else.
Water service, anything.
We got lucky with the 100% funding. It's 15 million dollars. We don't have to pay any of it. And we were expecting 25 or 50% match, and we got 100% match. So, the money we had allocated off to the side to pay the other 75 or 50%, now that money's sitting there, because now we got 100%. So we're able to use some of that money now for the other projects that council's brought up, or managers brought up, or just areas where we're seeing we have a lot of breaks in taking care of some of these obstacle issues that we're being faced with.
So keep in mind too, on the alleys, council only allocated us 500,000 in the general fund for alleys this year. I think we dipped in another million to our fund balance to do it. So, I mean, we really upped the ante on those of what we wouldn't have done before. And we're already planning for the spring. We're hoping to do the East Joseph Campo Alley. Basically, all the way from Evoline to Holbrook, if all goes well, amongst other ones that we're trying to figure out creative ways to do it. But alleys, for example, are sort of hard to do, because it's a general fund or some other crazy way you're trying to do it.
Too, and fixed, so.
Well, you say we have the money. Goodson been on the plan for almost, since I've been in council, and it's never been touched.
That's Goodson, the full tear out is coming up hopefully this winter.
That we're working on, we have a couple of things going. We have the Clean Water SRF, which we did get in the fundable range for the loan for that. However, at the same time, we're working on the FEMA grant. So, we're hoping FEMA grant comes through, because that'll take care of 75% of that project.
Try and get it free.
So, it's trying to balance everything, and we're going after as much grant money as we can. Your city is probably one of the few that's getting the max amount of grant money that we're putting in for. So, we're doing everything we can to try and balance stuff, so we can utilize grant money instead of utilizing, taking out loans and city funds.
Mr. Chair.
And you gotta understand, we need to replace sewer and waters before we replace roads.
Okay, just wanna remind that my colleagues. Water Department, city was, we was one time broke, almost going bankruptcy. Borrowed the money from Water Department, saved the city. That's Water Department, the money is coming from residents. Okay, it's not coming from anywhere. And somebody saw those money over their city and use it a little bit issue. So, so those money save our city long time ago, we borrow from there and put it back. And money has to use for water related issue, is those money coming from residents. My question, yes, the department has, was there previous, not him. So it was his job, when design was final, do the notices, any wrong, anything see, he should raise the flag. And he did not, most of the department had, is going like that, since some of the stuff we see. So what I'm saying, we need to be more active, like a rainy day fun. When I came here, it was surplus 5 million. Within three years, that money gone real quick. Okay, so those kinds of situation we didn't want. This city was two time receiver ship in my life I saw. It was the 10 million surplus, for, how you, you have a, the jail system gone, you know what's gonna happen to us. So all those thing I'm reminding, everybody have to understand, if I had the 10 year service, I had a pension from here, I go somewhere else, and then the city life to give me pension. Okay, and there is other thing happening, I cannot speak here. Next council meeting, I have to bring another resolution. So anyway, go ahead, and we have to watch, that's all.
Okay, so, I need to speak some. Okay, go ahead, Council. See, this project and Joseph Campo, I remember like four years ago. The resident, Desmond Alban, 4 million dollar for our resident. And Hennessy engineer should be his problem for this job. We can't promise with, when they came the new gap in Goodson. Because he missing this problem, Denton and Joseph Campo. He gets fixed it like three years ago. Now he find the issue, where the problem, he dumped the cement. He dumped the cement, this issue, he gets fixed it eight month ago. Now he coming back to the city. And how we gonna promise a new gap? Same in Goodson, they cost a lot of money.
I'm not following.
How we gonna promise company, he did like the, four years ago, he did the sewer from Denton to Goodson and Joseph Campo. When he did this job, after three years, they find out the problem, they said, this issue, they some dumped cement. That's him, that's him, he find out. And he fixed it eight month ago.
Are you, Councilman, are you alleging that the contractor currently on the job?
I'm talking for Hennessy engineer, for his job.
He felt of him.
Yeah, I'm talking for Hennessy-
He was seen every morning.
His job and his problem. And he take from our resident, 4 million dollar bond.
He's right, I was there. Anyway, let's go.
He take 4 million dollar bond from all our resident, four years ago.
I'm not tracking, who?
So, I think you're saying that it's their responsibility.
Yes.
Yes, his responsibility for his job.
And the problem appeared recently?
How we gonna promise a new gap, and when they did in Goodson?
We uncover stuff as we go. I mean, there have been televised things throughout the city, we continue to televise.
And sewers, not water.
Water mains you can't televise. So there's un-
Replacing, replacing the wall, Mr. Chair.
We open up the ground on this stuff. So that was the issue, is that we open up the ground to connect into the 24 inch water main going north on Joseph Campo. We found that it was filled with concrete.
That is the issue we're talking.
We don't know why it was filled with concrete or how it got-
I will tell you no more.
Because we haven't done any work that far north. So-
All right, so, let the council decide on this one. And then hopefully, within the next remaining eight weeks of possible construction, that we see all the projects we assigned done. It's like seven streets and seven alleys, I hope we get them done, not to postpone it to the next year. Because they started some streets eight, like two months ago, and they still on the same spot.
Mayor, which one are you talking about?
I haven't seen any improvement, like improvement in Fleming. It started in, next to Knef. And then down toward Carpenter, I drive every day, there is nothing. I'm hoping that I will leave them one day in the middle, but nothing.
So Knef, we're hoping to wrap up here probably in the next couple of weeks or so, right? As far as the lead service lines through there. And then that'll be capped basically through winter. And then that won't get touched again until spring, hopefully, thinking?
Yes.
Or we'll never the grant money hits, basically, for that. Probably towards the end, probably towards the end of summer on that one, because that's money wise, that's when it comes in. So we'll rip out the all of Knef again, from basically Joseph Campo to Conet. And then that'll be completely done, just like we did the other two sections. As far as alley goes, we're down to the last three alleys. I believe we're doing the north Holbrook right now. I know they were ripping it out as of last week. Did they start paving it, the north Holbrook?
Yeah, it's, all the time, we're markets done. I thought, buying the market is just finished, but not the rest from-
But they're ripping that out as of Friday, if they're gonna buy it.
Yeah, I was talking about Fleming. It's one of the most important-
Well, that's on our list now.
Fleming was only done from Knef up to Casmir.
But that's-
Yeah, that's what, what it's supposed to get done to Carpenter.
No, we haven't done the-
It's on the list.
We haven't done lead service lines from Casmir to Carpenter, that's the thing.
It's coming.
I need to get underground work done before I can do road work. That's where I think a lot of disconnect comes in. We have to put in lead service lines and get those replaced before we can replace, pave a road. Otherwise, it's wasted.
Why did we approve it from there to there when we know it?
We only approved from Knef to Casmir.
So a lot of this, a lot of this stuff's been approved years back. Like this council just, within this past year said, hey, we want you to continue down Fleming, which I believe actually the Councilor signed.
I brought that up.
And brought some other streets into the mix, and we said, okay, we'll do this. And we popped them on the list. We just haven't got to those yet. I mean, they're coming, that's probably within, I think that's the next batch we're doing.
Yeah, and another thing, I remember that meeting.
Roundbacks on there?
And moving forward, we did, I did have a meeting with Hennessy and John Hennessy. And before, they wanted to stagger work throughout the city, so everybody seen some work going done. That's one, costs more money, it's very aggravating. And then you have to tie in the stuff you've already tore out, we did. So I met with Tiffany, I said, let's do quadrants, and let's do entire roads, let's do sections. I don't want all over the place, it's not working all over the place. So that going forward, a lot of these roads that you've been talking about, the plan is to do the entire streets. But there was somebody that are already on the schedule that we had to go with what they was-
So everything council asked, Matt, come here and council asked for is on the list, it's moving forward. Except we got to it just yet. As far as the batch of alleys that we got going now, we're down to the last three. We gotta finish off Holbrook. We have the West Conet Alley, basically from Comer to Casmir. And then we have the West Joseph Campo Alley from Carpenter-Nible. We, realistically, probably will get that one. I have a feeling the Conet one, they may or may not make it, I'm pushing them hard. I literally see the guy every other day, I'm out there pushing them. But that might hit the spring, along with hopefully, the East Joseph Campo Alley, which we're already trying to line up now. So, I mean, there's, like I said, there's only so many people to get so many, I mean, all this stuff has to be bid out, and it's all bid out competitively. There's only so many contractors that want it. And then the ones we select, we gotta fit into their schedule. I mean, it's, we don't have the power of, say, like the state of Michigan or Detroit, that we've got a billion dollars, we're throwing at something, and they're gonna jump for us.
And we're fixing everything under the alley now too. So any alley going forward, I've had the mall jetted, cleaned, televised, and I'm fixing all the sewer leads that are broke, caved in sewers, or weaving warriors that stuck in drains in there without telling anybody, so all that stuff's been fixed.
East Joseph Campo Alley alone, between that section, we have five repairs we have to do. So, I mean, all that's prep work in order before we can even rip out the alley to do the alley. I mean, there's a ton of stuff that goes into this.
Mr. Chair. So, let's move on. We got another one to go to. Big one is from you. Yeah, let's move on this one. Everybody made their point.
Right? Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
I don't know how we gonna do, how we gonna promise issue like that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I gotta say no.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
No.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-166, approved 4 to 2.
All right, thank you. The next one is resolution 2023-167, approving Joseph Campo water main construction, which will, is related to the first one.
Motion.
Second.
Can we just go ahead and vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
No.
Councilman El Samiri.
No.
Councilman Hassan.
I'm sorry, already.
So this is the construction, first of all, the design, so it's related.
It can relate.
I think you shouldn't happen, it should be consistent.
I have to say yes, because I approve the design, because without design cannot do much.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-167, approved 4 to 2.
All right. All right, the next one is resolution 2023-168, approving the 2024 DWRF and CWSRF design proposal. Motion.
Second.
All right. Any spun, you wanna talk about that?
So, we put in for six water mains, lead service line replacement, and distribution systems material for clean water, the investigation to be done under the drinking water SRF. That, we received the 15 million dollar in 100% grant money, so under the ARPA grant. For the clean water, we put in for 2 million in cleaning and televising the sewers, along with the construction of the sewer relief 1B, which would go down Goodson and up Joseph Campo, just south of Holbrook. Again, that's the one, we're also in conjunction trying to get FEMA grant money. So if that one comes in, we'll pull out of that, you know, not take that loan. But to safeguard the city, so we can try and get that done, we felt it was still valid to move forward with the loan.
And these are also last year's that we just got, correct?
Yes, so we submitted these, we submit a notice of intent in November of 2022 for these projects. So this is us looking forward, you know, working with DPS, trying to figure out what projects, where we're having major water main breaks, that kind of stuff, where the water main problems are, and what water mains need to be fixed.
Will you just be the water main, not sewer line?
The sewer is the relief sewer, but no, under clean, under the drinking water, so there's two different things, we got the drinking water, and then we have the clean water. But under the drinking water, it's all for the drinkable water. So the water main lines, so the sewer lines are for the relief sewer.
That's kind of probably another source of confusion too, because we're getting many funding sources for this. I mean, this is money from the state, basically, it comes at us as a loan, which is being forgivable, correct? And then, I mean, we have actual water fund money that we use for some of these projects. We have FEMA money coming at us for projects, we have ARPA money. I mean, we have money coming at us from every direction for all these projects. And a lot of these projects, once we propose them, we're sort of locked into that route. We've added everything council asks for, but we're sourcing them in different ways. So this is basically, I mean, we're knocking out huge sections of the city with this stuff.
Mr. Chair, I have a very stupid question for you. If we don't have those funds, 25 million dollars, do you bring this to our past distribution? If you don't have the fund, do you bring this in the council to face these things?
If we didn't have the fund to complete it?
Yes.
No, so what we did is, we did, we put together-
We had the money now, and you will need to complete the job, am I right?
These are grants, Council.
So this is, the 15 million dollars is 100% grant money. So what we did is, myself, so Hennessy and the DPS sat down, we looked at, let's, we knew there was grant money out there. And then there was that potential to get grant money. We didn't know if we were gonna get 25%, 50%, or 100%. So what we did is, we put together a big wish list. We put a 15 million dollar water infrastructure improvement wish list. And-
We got it.
We got it. So I, it's 100% free money, so, in ARPA grant money, so-
We're asking for 20 next year.
Yeah, I put in close to 20 million for next year, because we don't know if grant money is gonna be there or not. But if it is, and we can get it, we want grant money. Grant money's free money.
If we weren't into this, it would be decades before we-
We wouldn't be able to, we would not be able to do this if we did not get the grant.
I understand all those things, supporting, grant money, you guys looking for. I understand, but the design one made me very upset. These kinds of thing, we appreciate. I don't mind it, we're just gonna let you.
Free money.
So the design for this stuff is covered under the grant?
Forget it, that one. I was, because I know everything that day.
I think we gotta talk some more about that one, I gotta understand that more.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I got a question to John. These are charged here for 110,000 dollars for sewer cleaning and television, right? Televising. Televising.
Television.
So is that before we, our equipment?
Well, we've already, yes, yes. The one, the bills that you're probably approving for, yeah. And there's still more, because they've been running them. So that's why I wanted to get the approval from council as fast as I could, so that we go into next year's cycles, especially on the alleys and some of the roads, we can televise our own. And our guys did start training on that, on the camera system itself. Yesterday, set up mock sewer lines in the yard and everything, and they're learning how to navigate the little Jeep that runs through the pipes and everything, so we're, they're getting pretty skilled on it.
So, I mean, now we're able to save money.
Got it.
Instead of us paying $110,000 to another company.
Yeah, by the time we get the rest of the bills, because I'm sure they'd embellish it fully yet for everything, yeah. But, yeah, we have, we have a pretty penny to pay.
There was a lot of prep work going in all these alleys and things, too. I mean, all stuff we had to do in preparation. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff.
Four to five days alone on the Joseph Campo Alley, just in televising and jetting and cleaning that alley, that was a disaster.
Last question. So I see Goodson Street from JC to Longton, main project. Is that tear down?
So that's for the watering portion. So, again, we got 100% grant money on that, so that helps us for that project, because if we're going to tear out the, if we're going to tear out the road, and everything like that, we have a water main down that road that's going to need to get replaced. So we're getting the water main for free, because that's under the ARPA grant money.
But replacing is our cost.
Then the sewer, we have to replace that when we replace the sewer. So.
My question is, will that replace everything, or just anything that has to do with piping?
Just the, so the water and the service lines is under that?
That's it, not the sewer system.
No, the sewer is what we have under the clean water, under the clean water SRF loan. That's what we're currently going after, but it's, at the same time, we're trying to finalize this FEMA grant, which would get us 75% funding. So with that 25% match, I told the state, or I told the state that we'd like to use, essentially, that ARPA money that we're getting free for the water main as part of our match.
Different ARPA money, not the 2 million we have.
Yeah, this is, this is all new ARPA money that came in.
And if all that works, then it means we're not going to be using from our water service network, correct?
Yeah, we're doing our best to alleviate our own water fund with all the grants.
And on another note, with the water mains that we're putting in, we're relocating them into, under the sidewalks, and we're getting them out of the roads.
So.
So that we don't have to keep digging up the roads and fixing things when they break.
Yeah.
Let's just move in. We had to run new service lines anyways, because they're lead service lines, so might as well just move the water line, get it out of the road, and then put the new service lines to each side of the street, and then when they break, we're only replacing some sidewalk squares instead of the street.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The water line, you fixing those things, after a couple of years, two, three years later, each time, we have a sewer backup come up. The one really prevent the sewer backup?
So we're doing water, not sewer. Those are, they're two different lines.
You don't have any plan for the sewer?
The sewer, we plan on cleaning and televising and fixing blockages that would possibly help the flow better, get the sewage out of the city faster, so in the long run, it does help and mitigates it.
Under Goodson, there's a sewer line as well.
And with the relief, the relief sewer should help alleviate a lot of that basement backups.
Every times after the disaster happen, so this FEMA money going for the sewer backup?
Yes.
Yes.
The FEMA money is for the sewer, is because of the sewer backup. That's where we're going to put in a 60-inch, so a five-foot diameter pipe down Goodson that will tie into the big sewer that we put down Joseph Campo to the Denton sewer.
Do you have any plan, how much it will cost us to fix all those sewer products? City of Hamtramck, 2.2 square miles.
50 million.
That's, we don't discuss before, whole other thing. That's a whole other project, that's a whole other, we're heading in that direction.
Let's focus on this one.
What's positive, this FEMA is already granting a lot of funds towards that project now in the beginning, so going forward, we probably get more.
I guess, when you do the surface line, from the last years and this years, the material is the same, although we change something for the material for the surface line.
We're using copper.
We're staying with copper.
Same copper, we didn't use the plastic?
I think there were five houses that got plastic, but we're staying with copper. We decided to.
Reason being is because negotiations with contractors, basically.
I tell you, voted for plastic, right?
We voted for the ability to go to plastic, because we believed it would be better, but there's also moving parts with contractors and contracts with them contractors, which we got to, it's a lot to explain, but perhaps.
It's in the best interest of the city to stay with copper, if we can, is what we can do.
Okay, now, how just want we did the plastic?
For now.
It's easier for you.
The contractor told us one thing when we got it approved, they came back and tried to charge us more.
It's a battle with the contractor.
So it was, it was in the best interest in the utilizing city wanting to.
We probably at some point will switch to that, but we were already under contract with the contractor, so the negotiations.
Well, we could do either, so it's nice, we have the option.
We have the ability to bid it out for either. At this point, unfortunately, the contractor that we currently have in doing service lines, there was a battle, once we said we could go to plastic and we gave them all the parameters, because there's certain codes and everything that we have to adhere to, to make sure houses are properly grounded.
I want to try and not tap into that, because there's negotiations with the contractor involved in that, which, then if we, so our hand, but if we could save that for, like, a negotiation-type meeting or offline, I appreciate that.
All right. Let's go.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-168 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2023-169 approving contract with Rapid Response Ambulance Company to provide EMS and EMS transport services for the city of Hamtramck. I make a motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have our fire chief here, who worked on this RFP and bidding process, along with a representative from Rapid. Matt, if you want to come up and give the council and mayor the lowdown.
All right, gentlemen, as you know, this is a contract service to provide EMS service for the city of Hamtramck. It is a three-year contract. We put it out for bids with the RFP, we had three responses. Two were companies who chose not to respond, the third one was Rapid, who is our current EMS provider. Everything is spelled out in the fee schedule in the resolution. Do you have any questions?
Couple highlights. On the ones that chose not to bid it, we reached out to them, why, but they just wouldn't. And then also, we've got an amendment in this new contract, which, there is a penalty if contract doesn't respond enough, or if Rapid doesn't respond in an appropriate amount of time. That was actually the fire union, along with the fire chiefs, we asked to add that into the contract, and Rapid agreed.
So we stick with the same plan in addition to the penalty?
Correct.
But the fees are going up.
Which.
The first year, the first year remains the same as this budget year, and then it goes up for the next, for the consecutive years.
How much is that?
Was it 5,000?
It's about 5,000, 6,000, it was.
Six percent.
Just a little over 4%.
Or 4%.
You want to introduce yourself?
I'd be happy to. Come on. Chief, you want? This is Jason Hosmer, he works for Rapid Response.
Good evening, council.
Good morning.
I'm Jason Hosmer, Vice President of Rapid Response EMS. So it's our pleasure to continue services into the city. Two components I'd like to highlight. One is the maintaining that second ambulance in the city. We've been doing that for a couple of years now, and with the help of my analytics team, fire chief, police chief, city administration, we've been able to pinpoint the timeframe when that second ambulance, which is in eight-hour time blocks, is needed in the city based on historical data. So that is a part of this continued contract that's going to continue. We have the ability to shift that time block a little bit, depending when the schools are out, and the kids are playing in the summertime, or it's in the evening hours, we can shift that eight-hour time block. The other component is, somebody had mentioned the pricing, so we were able to maintain the same cost structure we have today for the next calendar year, which is our fiscal year from December to Jan, or for, yeah, January to December, I'm sorry. So there is no added cost for the first year of the contract. Year two and three, there's a very marginal increase, and we attribute that to anticipate or forecasted wage increases and benefits.
Also, keep in mind that every month, our chief gets the analytics from Rapid, so he's basically delving through them and looking at it, watching it, seeing, seeing everything that's happened for that month and moving forward. So any tweaks that need to happen, our fire chief meets with Rapid and it happens.
Mr. Chair. I got a question. So the first 144,000 stays EMS services for one year, and then all in the bottom, peak time coverage for one year, it's 174,000. So what's the difference?
144,000 is for the ambulance that's here 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
One ambulance?
The one ambulance. The second ambulance is in those eight-hour time blocks. That total cost is higher, in aggregate, it's a higher amount. It is used incredibly low, has a very low utilization rate. It's about 30 transports a month, so I still have to staff it and put it in the city during the peak demand periods that we've identified, but the actual usage in the transports is low, even though the costs remain high for that unit.
So is it the 144 plus 174?
For the two ambulances. That's how it's been for the last, maybe, maybe two years.
Due to the fact of, you're able to recoup costs on higher volume runs, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, Councilman, if I can explain the reason for that. So, as Jason just explained, so it's 144,000 for the 24 hours, and then, yes, it's 174 for that eight-hour block. Reason being is, over the 24-hour span, the ambulance company is able to recoup a lot more of its costs through billings during that time, as opposed to that ambulance that's there for the eight-hour blocks. It's a very low run volume, even though we need it, so they're not able to recoup any costs out of that, hence they have to pass on a higher cost to us for that timeframe.
Just hire them full-time, cheap. Doesn't make sense.
And do you have, have you got an ambulance?
Yeah. To me, that doesn't make sense, have a full-time ambulance for 144, but now you get a part-time, costs more than a full-time.
We can certainly look and see what having two ambulances 24 hours a day would cost. They'd have to run the data, chief would have to analyze it.
Here's the one, times 144, times two.
Well, the second, the utilization on the second ambulance would be really slow.
Yeah, so in other words, the other 16 hours on there, it would be used maybe once, I'm just speculating, we'll say maybe used once a day, which means that that cost would be even phenomenally higher, because they're not going to be able to recoup those costs for those other 16 hours at all. The second ambulance is basically sitting there a lot, basically, so they're not, they're not making money by recouping costs from the insurance companies. So if we add another 16 hours, I can't even imagine how much higher that would be. Probably, based on that, triple.
I see where you're coming from.
It's not good, because what is the peak hours? What is your term of peak hours?
What time do you, like, is it change or always?
Right now, it's from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
It's off.
And that's just based on historical data for the last 40 years.
It's the recouping costs. The more runs, if they had more runs in a day, like, if that second ambulance was running more, it would be cheaper. But it's sitting there a lot. We need it for those peak hours, because we do have multiple calls during there, but it's, it's not moving. I mean, the more the ambulance moves, the cheaper it gets, because they're recouping their costs. If that ambulance was going 24 hours a day, it'd probably be free. It probably would be. Yeah, yes.
Yes, let's go back again, numbers. So as we speak, as what you presented to us right now, is that it costs us 318,000 for a full-time ambulance and a part-time?
Yes.
If we're able to have two full-time, it's going to be 288. You're saving almost 30,000.
The fee, the fee schedule would be different based on usage.
Because that ambulance is.
They didn't pay it by sitting there.
That's the problem, that's the problem, Councilman. The ambulance company recoups its losses, it makes its money by the ambulance moving. So every run it gets, it makes money. When the ambulance is just sitting there, not doing anything, they're not making any money, and it's costing it more to sit there. If the, if both ambulances were running constantly all day long, this would be free to us. But since the ambulances are sitting there, not moving, and they're not able to recoup their costs from making their runs, that's why the costs are higher, because they basically are paying, we're basically paying for them to sit there.
So you're just telling me we should do in-house?
It'll be more money. We've, we're analyzing it.
It's a Friday, but we'll take over.
We're, we're already heading towards doing basic EMS for our fire truck, that's the route we're heading right now, but as of right now, the numbers do not suggest it would be less expensive.
We have, we have the power, we have the man.
Mr. Chair?
No, just goes to each other.
It's dollars and cents, Councilman.
The question is, that if you want to cut down the budget, do we need the second one? That's the real question. If you don't, if you want to cut down the budget, we can take out the peak hours and have one run for 24 hours a day, and then, and then see if it works. But we did not work out. We added the second one, because of the peak hours, people call in, people come from work, and, you know, so on.
It's a trade-off of, I mean, an ambulance might not be available during that time, because if you get multiple calls and there's not a second ambulance running there.
Can I remind people the incident that happened at the school not too long ago? That's one of the reasons we have the second ambulance.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's up to the council right now.
All right, enough. We can go ahead and vote.
Councilman, we can talk.
Vote?
Fun in paper, I get it.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-169 approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. The next one is, resolution 2023-170 approving memorandum of understanding with that Hamtramck Park Conservancy. I make a motion.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Please, one, the firing line.
Go.
The budget is only 2,000.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for the time. This memorandum of understanding was with the Friends of Hamtramck Historic Stadium for the past few years, and the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy's path and direction of trying to take more control and working on a memorandum, memorandum of understanding of the city in the future. We decided this year to, instead of going through the Friends of Hamtramck Historic Stadium, it's going to go through the Parks Conservancy. Tom over here, our executive director, can give you a little bit more details about that plan.
Yeah, so it's really just a continuation of the really exciting programming that's happened at the baseball stadium for the past two years. So last year, there was over 100 baseball games, a lot of people coming to Hamtramck to, to play ball, and a lot of spectators, too, and then when the field is not programmed for baseball, it's open for community use. So as the Conservancy is poised to take more control and make more contributions to the programming in the area, this would be a shift from the Friends Volunteer Group who's been doing the programming just over to our group. But otherwise, we look forward to, you know, kind of more of the same activities at the stadium for the coming year.
And just, if it makes it easier, no cost to the city.
Oh, you're destined to pay a cost. I thought it was going to cost the city, the budget just went 3,000, but that's...
We're paying the 3,000.
You bring...
Yeah, as a nominal, you know, rental contribution.
Very nice, very nice of you.
Just one opinion or concern. When I go to the park, there's a lot of dog poop on the park. So how come we don't have those, you know, bags?
It's actually a lot of goose. And it's an ongoing problem at the park over there.
Is it?
Yeah. The field's cleared and everything else. It's a lot of geese that stay at the park, at the actual ballpark in the field itself. There's, we've been, it's been an ongoing problem that they're trying to deal with. We can look into installing, as you mentioned, the dog bags and stuff. That's something we look into installing next spring when the construction season goes in there. But just to let you know, it's a lot of geese.
A lot of poop. Okay.
The grounds crew's been working on the goose issue. There was a little strobe light that was placed behind the pitching mound that's supposed to deter them, and that was unfortunately stolen recently, so. We're working on it now.
That was a littering, they wasn't...
Yeah.
Almost everywhere. Well, that's a lot of dogs.
Little dogs. I think it's all geese, yeah.
Ready?
Thanks, guys.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-170 approved.
Thank you. Next one and the last one, Resolution 2023-171, authorization to enter an agreement for the development and sale of 279 Belmont Street to Gamdan.
How many? Motion. Second.
It's Mrs. Stock.
Mr. Al-Tamaych. Good guy. I don't know. He's, is he the one? Harameh? Yes. Two brothers, it's a very thing.
So this is a regular single lot, 30 by 100. We did attach the plans. Now, these are conceptual, so this is not the final site plan. It's just a concept of what they're looking to do. It would be $10,000 for the sale of this property. Basically, we're just requesting permission to enter into a development agreement and sale.
Well, here we go.
Hope you built it. I know you can, he got... All right.
Voting?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-171 approved.
All right, thank you.
Just the Mr. Chair, there are three owners. He's the only one that stayed in Hamtramck, but the rest moved, by the way.
That's right. Thank you for that, thank you. Yes. Good night. Love you, have a great day.
All right, now with this, we come to the end. And now we move to the reports. And I'll start with my report, which is short. I mean, I have to mention my activities for the past weeks, which I don't remember most of them, because there's too many. So I attended a major event for EKN, Islamic Circle of North America, last week, and I was recognized in that event. It was a big event there, annual event. Took place in Westland, where Soho, Soho, banquet hall. And I just came back last night from California. I was there over the weekend. Again, I was invited to a charity event for Yemen to support the healthcare system. Mainly the people with end-stage renal disease, those who are on dialysis. So I went there. Anything for charity, I travel. I don't mind going anywhere, no matter who's the organizer. So they raised money for Yemen there, and I enjoyed the good weather for a couple of days. And came back to Michigan last night. That's it for me. And next report for the Mr. Mayor, Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to congratulate the winners on the election. And good luck for Councilman Chowdhury, maybe next time.
Thank you.
Make it. You guys did very well, all of you, and it was a very successful election. But the turnout wasn't that great, 23% compared to close to 35% in my election. So that tells you, you know, how to make people enthusiastic throughout the vote.
Sure.
All right, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought you don't like us about nothing. Sorry. So, thank you, Hamtramck. All residents came out, voted. That's the main key. Vote for who is not the matter. Come out and vote. That's all we care. And I'd like to especially thank you, Mr. Bill Myers. Today, come here and correct us, ask all the time, and saying today, if he was not here today, maybe again, another record without public comment. You save us, and you save the public also. Again, thank you. Thank you, my colleagues. We're working together, lots of difference. We see the boarding today and lots of question. And also invoice register, we need a more question. I apologize, I don't have time enough to look at that one. That one also, we have to start look at that one. So that's the good thing. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And next, we, before we move to the council report, I just remember something. I was, I received so many questions from the media regarding the recent lawsuit against the city for the flag issue. And, I mean, I, it was expected, nothing, I mean, I thought we already, there was already multiple ones filed against the city. I don't know why this one made it to the news that bad. And I saw some people on the social media using the public comment number as a strong evidence that the lawsuit will succeed. Basically, I mean, this is, I don't know, when we talk about research and statistic, what... This is not a sample, authentic survey that you do here or study for the public comment. It's all about who is available to come, who did a great job mobilizing more people to come to the meeting, who has access to the internet to write emails. And, I mean, so it's not something to use as an evidence. I mean, random sample study is the strongest study and research. You have to pick a random sample, not use 10 people of the same family or same color and then say, oh, we are more than you, so our evidence are stronger. To do a random sample study, for the city, you have to go to the mosque, to the church, to the market, to the street, to the bar, southeast, northwest. That's random study. And then you come up with the results. But to say, oh, we wrote more emails than you, therefore, this is a strong evidence that more people are supporting this side or that side. And another thing to compare, the city of Hamtramck is not being selective on which flag to raise. We just specified which flag should be raised, which is the government flag. Unlike the case of Boston, a few years back, when they allowed 284 flag of different groups to be flown on the flagpole of the city, and then they prevented one person from raising his flag, which was a religious flag for some reason. So we filed a lawsuit against the city, and he won from the Supreme Court. Supreme Court ruled against the city because it was selective. There was selective enforcement. They allowed 284 flag to flown over the past several years, and they prevented one person from flying his flag. This is not the case with Hamtramck. Hamtramck is being neutral. We just said no to all flags, no matter what group you belong to. We just allowed the government flag. So I don't understand why people are celebrating that they, as if they already won the case, while it's still in the beginning. So I don't see, and I watched in one of the news, an attorney who, they asked him right after we passed the resolution, and he said, the only way you can win a lawsuit against the city is if they started allowing some groups to fly their flags and they prevented the LGBT flag. So this is just my opinion, and I, and that's how I responded to the media. And it's, of course, up to, you know, our city attorney. He's going to take care of that. But that's something I would, you know, I wanted to mention. And we can continue with our reports for the city council. Anyone would like to start?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to thank everybody that showed up here tonight, especially Bill and his good friend, the entire room, just them. Also, I want to thank everyone who showed up for the protest and the rally for Palestine. I want to thank all the imams, leaders. You know, everybody that showed up, even from different cities, from Warren, from Deerebo and Deerebo Heights, from everywhere. That was a successful protest. You know, we all stood up for Palestine and what's going in Palestine, and it's nonsense. Also, I wanted to mention about, you know, this nonsense newsletter that the Hamtramck, we have in the city of Hamtramck, where, you know, since we became empowered, it's been working against us. It has not supported this body at all. You know, like our friend Bill had mentioned that they showed up at the protest. They seen the number of individuals that showed up. In the end, they just showed up, just 200 people showed up. It's like the entire, you know, the big number that, you know, there was a drone there. You know, it's on YouTube, they could easily put Hamtramck on YouTube and they can find out how many people showed up before writing something, you know, if you're not 100% sure how many numbers showed up. But there were enough number, more than 1,000, that showed up. It was a great protest. It was, you know, thanks to our police department, the entire department that, you know, showed support, making sure, you know, we protested, marched safely until we reach our destination. Everybody have a great night, stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Rafai. Yes, I don't know how I forget to mention the protest. I mean, it was one of the most important event that I attended. And I spoke at the end, and I said my speech. So it was a very successful event with a great turnout. And there's so much to say about, you know, the Hamtramck building. Just, it's work as the voice of the former power structure, let's say it clearly. I mean, that's how I see it when I read every article. And I don't know if it's still being funded by us as, you know, for the advertisement and stuff. But this needs to be reconsidered, because it has to be neutral. The other day, I was asked frequently about statement of some, some person who was accused of being anti-Semitic, who said things that they considered anti-Semitism. I don't know what I have to do with what someone said about foreign effect up there that I don't care about. I can't control people on what they say, even if they are commissioners in the city. And people don't realize that the Semite people are the Arabs and the original Jews. They don't understand that Arabs are Semite as well. But it's okay for anybody, they might say, to say anything against the Arabs. It's not considered anti-Semitic, anti-Semitism. But if it's, which we condemned in this body last year, we passed a proclamation to condemn anti-Semitism. Everybody knew that, and that's our stance in this body. So I don't know why would someone to come and ask me or you guys about our opinion and that if someone in the city said something suspicious. We can't control people's opinion. This is freedom of speech in this country. They can say whatever they want. We had a person who raised the Nazi flag on his house in this city. I'm not responsible for what he does, that's his freedom of speech thing. So again, that's just to mention the point that came to mind. Next, you want to, go ahead, next, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, folks. Thank you for being here. First and foremost, congratulations to all the winners. And I have just a small message that I text, I put it in my note. My dear Hamtramck residents and all the wishers, I received hundreds of calls, text messages to comfort me and my family. Also, many stopped by the house. I'm grateful to you for your love, kindness, and trust. You have always supported me. I hope you will continue to do so in the future. I love working for the community, helping people for the betterment for the community. I have tried to be there for you, and I will try to continue doing as much as possible from my position. Thank you so much for coming out and voting for me or someone else. The vote is mattered. That's important, that's your voice. And it's all come down to, as you know, absenteeism, but that's how it ended. And it's fine. And I'd like to also appreciate Madam Clerk Rana and staff and aide to work very hard during this election and did a great job, as well as our city administration. They all watched over the election. Thirdly, we had a great rally, and hundreds of people showed up. Not 200, that's fabricated for trade. I marched from Yemen Cafe all the way to Carpenter, Carpenter, to Conan, to the City Hall. That's over 1,000 people. I have live videos. And we all stood up for the, our brother, sister, and Palestinians. What's happening there, it's unbearable, unacceptable. It's totally war crime and genocide. I hope everybody continues to support the Palestinians to be free and have a ceasefire. At least, at least giving people, I mean, humanity. You know, that's just basic rights. I don't know. It breaks my heart, it makes me tear. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, probably it's going to be repeat the same thing. And I thank you, everyone, and thank you for the organizer, for the Palestinian rally. That was a really fantastic rally. And thank you for only the Muslims, every, you know, race of people that showed up and support this rally. They're not supporting the rally, they're supporting the Palestinians, the way it's getting genocided, you know. And that should be a wake-up call for our politicians and our elected leaders, upper leaders of Congress and Senate to do the ceasefire now, because this is, you know, people are saying enough is enough. It's not only Muslim people or Christians, Jewish people coming out on this day that they are protesting. Then, you know, we don't want to see any more peace dying. This is not what the world wants to see. And as a, you know, a great country in United States of America, we should have stand up and speak up and stop, you know, the genocide. Secondly, congratulations on the winners. And Naim, I know you don't win, but you know, your campaign was very lively. You did a great job, and we appreciate what you did and, you know, your continued support. I know it's going to be always happen in the city. And as a community activist, I hope you always support the council and come back. And, you know, if you do something wrong, then tell us what are you doing wrong. You know, if you're doing good, you know, appreciate those things as well. And that's it, thank you. Have a great night to everyone.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead. I'd like to thank you, everyone, you came out today for the meeting. And I'd like to thank all residents in Hamtramck. They fought in for me, I was not. And I'd like to thank everyone, they came to the protest and Palestinian, and they support that one. And all my friends, they speak for that one. And thank you for everyone. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you, Bill Myers, to be here this evening. So at least you are the one. We don't have something like last week. I'd like to congratulate all the winners. Mayor Protem, Gamal Hassan, Al-Samiri, and you will come back, Muthashen Sanman, for your victory. And also, I missed you, brother and my colleague, Naim Chowdhury. Thanks for dedicated work, and you fought real good, and it is appreciated. And thank you, Mr. Clerk, you did a wonderful job. I came in a couple of times, but when I saw you, I just stay away from there. I don't want to disturb you. Every stop, very helpful.
Did I scare you? Was I scaring you? They should have come if it was.
Very helpful. You did a smooth and successful election.
Thank you.
Last Tuesday.
Thank you.
And thank you to people who came into last Saturday parade. It is a wonderful parade. Our heart for the people of Palestine, special for the Gaza. I don't know, the one day it could be our government, higher level, White House could be woke up, and they realize it. If Israel has the right to their freedom and protect them, but Palestinian people have the right to their life. More than 5,000 kids are killed in this war, and most of them are women also. Kids and women is not a part of the war. But our government and the most political people, they don't, they don't see this part. They don't realize it. I appreciate the people all over the world who come up and put their bias to ceasefire for those people from America, Europe, Asia, all over the place. Those people has a common sense, those people has a heart. Those people feeling the pain for those people who's dying each and every day. I hope one day President Joe Biden will woke up. Donald Trump says sleepy Joe, sleepy Joe, woke up, and he'll do the ceasefire for the people. And thank you, all those imams, leaders, all those people from Hamtramck and surrounding area who joined this last meeting, last rally, a successful rally, successful rally. And I condemn this paper. Who told this 200 people come to the parade? Newspaper will be the face of the truth. And it is, you can, same thing with us, same way, you're going to woke up and see how many people in the parade, more than 1,000 people in the parade. Please, if you don't deliver the truth news, don't deliver the false news. Thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you very much for all of doing that again.
Thank you, Councilman. And talking about our president, I saw a video that he tripped on the stairs of...
Again?
I hope, in Poland, he's on a visit to Poland, right?
Yeah.
I saw it before I came here. I hope he's doing fine. It was a big fall on the stairs of the airplane. So I just hope he's doing fine, and when he comes back, we will keep asking him to ceasefire. Because today is day 39 of the war. Nothing was accomplished except killing 12,000 people so far. And, you know, rockets is still being fired into every place in Israel. So it's just a war that's killing the civilians. The enemy of Israel, who's the resistance, are under the ground, and it's...
The enemy of Israel, who's the resistance, are under the ground, and it's very hard to get rid of them. And every child who's being killed, hundreds of people are joining the idea of resistance to the occupation. So, this is a transgenerational conflict, like I said, and it's not going to be ended even by getting rid of all the resistance groups that are available today. So, with that, we come to the end, and it seems that there's a report for the controller, but he's not here.
Yeah, I didn't have him come today. We just uploaded him for reviewing.
So, we move back to the public comment.
Mr. Bill Myers.
Can you manage it?
No, he's going to be distracted.
I removed it from there.
Okay, thank you for letting me have the last word. First of all, the J. Joseph Capo was tore apart 2005, totally. I lived right near it, I remember walking down the gravel and dirt on Joseph Capo when they pulled out the old rails from the old streetcar. Totally torn up. And yes, I do remember, it's on the map that John Hennessy presented to all of us, explained very well. But I think it would have been nice to have John Hennessy here to try to answer questions, because he's a, he's a good person, and I think he means good for the city, so it'd be good to ask him directly. So, I have to add on just a few more things about what I said earlier. Not only is this paper horrible in the sense of being Islamophobic about this particular parade, but it's been all along, I mean, since I've lived there, it's been Islamophobic. I don't know why you maybe just discovered that. But this article didn't only have a mistake of 200 people, it also didn't interview anybody from the organizers that put the parade together, they didn't talk to anybody about the parade. They had no idea what's planned, who was going to do it, they didn't advertise it. Instead, at the end of the article, which is usually the most important part of an article, is they interviewed someone from the Zionist group, the Yehudah organization, and how horrible Palestinian Hamas is and all that stuff. You know, Hamas, whether you like it or not, was elected to office in Gaza. We didn't like them to win, so we did everything we could to overthrow them, which is what, that's why we support Israel's politics. You know, like the mayor said, one person's terrorist is another person's freedom fighter. If they don't work on your side, then they're called terrorists. As far as anti-Semitism, which is thrown around a lot, for anybody who criticizes Israel, you're not anti-Semitic if you criticize Israel. I'm with a group called JVP, one of the organizers, one of the founders of Jewish Force for Peace. There's thousands of Jews in America who oppose...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can have it.
Okay. There's thousands of Jews in America that oppose this war, that oppose Israeli Zionist policies. You don't have to be anti-Semite to, you know, that's a government that you're opposed to. So, I think it's important to mention the history of what happened there, and this paper and this article made no interest at all of showing the history of what really happened in that region. It didn't just start on October 7th. Palestinians were killed, driven out, millions were killed back in 1948, 47, it started with the British mandate. The whole history is very complex. You can't just go by what happened on October 7th and condemn the Palestinians. This is a crime against humanity, what happened, and the rally you put together was so important, and I thank you all and everybody who showed up at that rally. Thank you for doing that. I hope we continue to fight against, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is how we vote.
All right, so with that, we come to the end, and we have a closed session.
We don't plan to come back to vote anything, it should be...
Oh, okay.
I need a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. 8:54.
Thank you.
8:24?
7:00.
9:54.
8:55, yes, 8:55.
8:55. Oh, 8:50. Oh, that clock, yeah. I'll fix it.
Are you tall enough?
I don't know.
I think he's got this.
Am I ripping my pants?
I was wondering.
I'll film it.